Because we're used to talking to the person that you're talking to.
Yeah, Wally does a pretty good job. He goes up like this. He can do better.
All right, we're good to go.
Good evening, everyone. I would call this meeting to order, please. And if you all stand, Councilman Hucks will have our invocation and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Ooh, Jesus, we come tonight to give thanks for the liberties, the blessings, and the way of life that we so enjoy in Boston and in the United States. And help us to always be mindful of those that have served and sacrificed so much in deduct our civic responsibilities. Please bless us. By His name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Davey. Okay, next item on our agenda is our, actually, some special presentations. I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to recognize and ask to come forward the chairperson of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Ms. Eden Harris. Well, Mrs. Eden Harris, I should say.
Thank you all. We're very excited to have the opportunity to present to you all tonight. Thank you, Mayor Hesel and the City Council for giving us this time. My name is Eden Harris, and I'm at 39 River Road, and I'm the chairperson for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Tonight, I am joined by my fellow board members, Bob Chiara, Anna Ward, Steve Forrest, Lindsay Watchen, Judy Massey, and our fearless staff member leaders, Dave Callis and Gretchen Gachanauer. Our presentation tonight is going to provide an update to you for the recommendation that was made to the city manager in spring of 2021, which we ultimately received 125,000 funding appropriation from this council in September. So, thank you very much. After extensive review, our board is recommending a multi-phased approach to recreational amenities within the city hall corridor in order to produce the best outcomes for our community. Tonight, we present our recommendation for Phase One of this project. With Phase One, the advisory board recommends a gazebo that could be used for both large and small events. This intentionally designed space will be used for community function such as youth programming with our schools and library programming, ceremonies for our growing Veterans Day memory tree lighting, and other community celebrations, as well as private functions, photo opportunities, and serve as a visual centerpiece for our city gateway. The photo shown here is a sample photo from a community in Oakhurst, Texas, to give you an idea of what we are providing or proposing tonight, of what a landscape gazebo along a tree line backdrop could look like. Our recommended location is a approximately half-acre lot at 27-1-96A, also known as the Frosty Festival location from this past winter. Our group, after looking at numerous sites within this corridor, have selected this area because it is mostly cleared already and would require minimal site prep, as well as, again, serve as that visual gateway for our city. For comparison, I'm a visual person, as many of you probably are as well. The Fort Monroe gazebo sits on approximately two acres and is 31 feet wide, and the Port Warwick gazebo sits on approximately 1.2 acres and is about 21 feet in diameter. For reference, our board feels a gazebo of approximately 24 feet could meet the needs of our city and fit nicely onto that parcel. So, what are we looking for within a gazebo? We want to make sure something is large enough to accommodate a band or a small performance of approximately 20 to 25 feet in diameter. We would look for an elevated main floor with wiring for power and landscaping to include lands, lighting, including landscape lighting, as well as multiple pathways that would be ADA accessible. We also, again, want to make sure that this is visually appealing and has heavy landscaping as part of it. In preparation for tonight's presentation, the Parks and Rec staff worked with a vendor on state contract to collect a more specific price for this project. Using the gazebo from Oakhurst, Texas, as a starting point, a state contracted vendor quoted us about approximately $94,000 for gazebo structure, roof, freight, installation, and a concrete pad for approximately a 28-foot structure. Additional expenses would include utilities, landscaping and hardscaping, site prep, and ADA considerations. Now, we recognize this is significantly higher than the price presented in the spring, but we want to be transparent about the volatile nature of construction costs and supply chain. Our hope is that through a competitive RFP and bid process, a contractor will develop a site plan that best fits our proposal and will bring down the costs significantly. Additionally, we also are prepared to work with community organizations who may be interested in supporting the installation, but those conversations have not yet happened. But we hope that those conversations could additionally help lower the cost. As I mentioned in the beginning, the gazebo is only Phase One of our recreational amenities within the city hall corridor. Once this project is complete, the board has identified other opportunities that may be recommended, but we are exploring a best fit between this area and the newly acquired land at the corner of Yorktown Road and Kelster Drive, which the city did not own when we made our original presentation. The board is currently in the discovery phase of this project and hopes to have more information later this spring. In January, our board held a community meeting with the neighbors, and later this week, we plan to launch a community survey to collect ideas on how we can best plan amenities at this location. The survey will be publicized through social media, through the city website, and on a sign that will be erected at the same site. After the survey closes at the end of March, the board will analyze the findings and begin a more formalized planning and recommendation process. Once those survey results are analyzed, we'll also be in a better position to make recommendations about what the next phase of the city hall recreational amenities will look like. But prior to those recommendations, we also want to take time to explore various partnerships, whether it's grant opportunities or community involvement to build upon the funds that have been appropriated, and any oversight and guidance that a project such as something like a dog park may require as part of the additions. So, what happens after Phase One? We are looking, again, look for grant money for project expansions that could be, completion could be proposed in both phases, especially if there's enough space for growth. But overall, we want to make sure that we're creating a well-developed, cohesive plan that considers both existing and future needs of our community, and that any project recommendations are going to align with the comprehensive plan completed in 2018. So, that in a nutshell is what we are proposing. Thank you again for the time this evening, and we look forward to any feedback that you may have for us.
Ms. Harris, wait just a minute. Any questions from council? Great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
And, you know, please don't think that Parks and Rec is insignificant to this city. It is not, and this is certainly proof of it right here. So, thank you so much, and thank all the members of the Parks and Rec committee. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other item under special presentation. It is my, it is my privilege to call forward our new finance director and formally introduce her to those of you she's not yet had a chance to meet, and also to the public here and watching at home. So, Ms. Lee Etheridge, if you'd come forward, Lee. Lee joins us after having been the finance director in Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina, for about seven years. She has more than 15 years' worth of local government experience, all but about a month of it, or less than a month of it, in North Carolina. But we're building on the other side. She has a bachelor's in accounting from UNCW and an MBA in, from the University of Phoenix. So, counting John Anderson, who we met a few months ago, we, we have two more MBAs than we had just, just four months ago. With that, Lee, I'd like to introduce yourself, cover anything I missed.
There we go. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. First of all, I would like to say that it is my pleasure to be here tonight. I'm thrilled to, to be selected to come onboard, to be your finance director, and I intend to continue the, the excellence, the financial reporting and excellence that this council and this city is, is used to receiving. So, again, I am thrilled to be here. It's been a pleasure, and everyone from, and from the community to staff and leaders, you have all been so very welcoming. I look forward to working with everyone.
Lee, let me, let me say, I've had an opportunity to see you almost every day.
Yes, sir.
There she goes, calling me sir again. We thought we...
It's happened.
That's okay. That's okay. But, you know, you come, you come to the city of Pecoson with the whole package. I mean, you've got the know-how, you've certainly got the personality, and you're going to be a tremendous addition to Randy's team. We're glad to have you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to audience for visitors. If there's anybody in our audience who would like to address council on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Our delegate.
Good evening. I just wanted to come stop by, give a little bit of a legislative update, if that's okay.
Sure.
We have passed several things out of the House that would be good for our community. Still cautioning the weather to get too excited about some of the things because it still has to survive the Senate. And anyone in the House, as you have, as you have a mayor, knows that the real enemy is the Senate. So, but we, I would really just like to tell you that, you know, our schools now are no longer requiring masks, so our children will be able to breathe. We did get that all the way through. We've gotten a whole number of things through. And I'm, I will ask if there's any questions, anything you want to know about what's going on in Richmond. I'd love to address that and let the citizens of Pecoson know I'm available for anything they need. We were working on the Virginia Employment Commission. I know a lot of people are experiencing a backlog on that. We've been able to cut through a lot of that recently and help some of the citizens of my, of this district. And if anyone is having that, that problem, please contact my office. We've been able to get that, that process flowing. And if there's any questions, I can answer really.
Sure. Any questions from council? I think our delegate is, is doing a good job. We appreciate it. I know it's your first year, first session. Were you able to find the bathrooms? Okay, yeah, okay. We think you're doing a good job. Thank you very, thank you very much for coming tonight. I'm sorry.
Can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Delegate, it's nice to see you. I just want to say thank you for your efforts. They were not successful, but it wasn't because you didn't work real hard, and we appreciate on the elections bill, and maybe there'll be an opportunity in the future for us to work together on a new version of that. But thank you for that. Appreciate it.
And we were able to carry it over, so it's not dead. So, we still have some time to work on it. I wanted to have it done before this coming election, but we will do our very best to get it through and, and get that fixed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. Regular session, January 24th, 2022, please.
May I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of January 24th, 2022?
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the minutes of our regular session, January 24th, 2022. Any concerns, comments, any additions? Okay, Kim?
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Abstained since I wasn't here.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one abstention.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Second item is an ordinance requesting additional preparation from the general fund and the capital project fund for fiscal year 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I recognize Chief Cates.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
This is, it can be a habit, and I'm okay with it, because I'm always coming to ask you to spend free money. And so, this is in, in reference to the Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, where I spoke with you previously, where we had received an amount of money through that program that had been held up in litigation that didn't involve the city. And this particular dispersal is for the federal fiscal year 2019 funds. The city of Pecoson was notified in January that we had been awarded $2,192 of the fiscal year 2019 funds. And what we intend to do with that, with those fundings, the increase in technology demand on investigations of offenses just is, has increased exponentially and shows no sign of slowing down anytime in the near future. One of the programs that we utilize is a system called Celebrate, which allows us to forensically, forensically examine data contained within a cellphone. I currently only have one individual trained in how that system operates and is certified to use it, and this money will be used to get one of my other investigators into the training and get certified to, to help with that demand. So, there's ordinance before you tonight appropriating those.
Yeah, free money, that's, that's a good thing.
Any questions to the chief?
I like spending that.
I do, too.
Thank you, chief. By the way, while you're there, how's our dog coming along?
Doing great. He is doing fantastic work. He is...
But he was sick there for a while.
And so, he, he has recovered well, and he is working every day.
Great, great. Thanks, sir. All righty. Let's move on to our second item under new business. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need, you're right. I do need a vote. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the Byrne Justice Assistance Grant and making additional appropriations fiscal year 2022 for the general fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Second item is an ordinance requesting additional preparation from the general fund, capital project fund for fiscal year 2022. Mr. Wheeler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call Ms. Etheridge to come back. Now that you've met her, now she's an old hand, and now we'll give her a chance to see how she does in her first agenda item presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor, council, citizens. Attached for your review this evening is an appropriation request for city council's consideration for fiscal year 2022. It is anticipated that the city will recognize an additional $230,000 in its personal property tax revenue source for fiscal year 2122. As a result of this increase in tax revenue, I respectfully request council consider appropriating this additional funding for the projects identified by management as listed below. First, we would like to assign $20,000 to establish a community celebration event that will bring fireworks to the community at the end of June 2022. Second, we would like to transfer $210,000 to our capital project fund for the following three projects. $40,000 for a replacement scoreboard to be located on the athletic field behind Pecoson Middle School. $140,000 in project funding to replace the city hall library roof. $30,000 for replacement of two bleachers at Messick Point. Attached, you will find an ordinance appropriating $230,000 to the general fund and $210,000 to the capital project fund for your review and approval. After your review and consideration, I respectfully request council considering motion to approve the attached budget ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, well done. Well done. Are any questions of Lee?
If not, is it, wait, Keith, I'm sorry. I can say, it's, it's just in the memo, so it's not in the ordinance, but I'm being picky. Is it fiscal year 2122, or is it fiscal year 22?
It's, it's 22. Fiscal year in 22, sir. Fiscal year in 22.
Got it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations in the general fund, capital projects fund for fiscal year 2022 as outlined by the finance director.
Okay.
Second.
That's made. And second, we adopt the ordinance. Are there any comments, concerns, questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Hucks. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. The last item under new business, a resolution making appointments to various boards and commissions. Someone prepare for some names?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to Economic Development Authority, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the following names inserted. For the Economic Development Authority, Ms. Cara Janine Joyce, whose term will expire March 31, 2024. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Allison Dye, whose term will expire March 31, 2023. And for the school board, I move that we change Craig Freeman from the at-large position to the west, so that we can, we can take further applications from the whole city to fill the at-large. And the planning commission, Christine Salak, at the at-large position, her term will expire January 31, 2024, and James Bentley from the Central Precinct, whose term will expire November 30, 2022.
All right, buddy, thank you. Okay, we have the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second that we adopt a resolution making appointments, various boards and commissions with those names inserted. Let me say, if I could, we, I know I've talked to some of you today, I've talked to you over the weeks, and apparently we need to put together a procedure that all of council can, can work with in terms of appointments. Last August, I don't remember who it was, it may have been all of council, asked the manager to draft something for our approval, something that we could all live with, and he did that. He did his job. The problem was with me, in that I did not move it any further than from Randy to me, and you should have had it, and you didn't get it, and that's on me, not on Randy. So, just don't want him thrown under the bus for something that I caused. Okay, we have a resolution, we have a second. Ms. Kim? I'm sorry.
Sir, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just like we moved Greg Freeman in order to make room for an at-large position, I think we have a similar thing on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I believe Allison Dye is from the Western Precinct, and the opening is for Eastern Precinct position, but we have Anna Ward here, who is at-large position, but she lives in the Eastern Precinct. If we were to move her over slightly, make her the Eastern Precinct representative, then we can open it up to at-large and therefore allow Allison Dye in there, if I can add that to the motion, or how that works.
I'll modify my motion.
Modify the motion. Okay, there's a second to the modification?
Second.
Okay. Back where we were. Motion made, second that we adopt the resolution. Ms. Kim?
One, one other thing, do, does the terms, she feel an unexpired, does Ms. Ward feel an unexpired term now?
Anna, Anna is in a full term currently. She was just appointed. The, the empty position, the empty position would be the reappointed person.
Yep. Council, the reappointed position that you appointed tonight would assume the empty vacant position, even though that was originally an Eastern District precinct member, so I don't think we would transfer the, unless there's protocol to do so.
She actually had, was, was filling an unexpired position, so that...
Correct. Allison Dye's appointment would...
And that one was...
...fill an unexpired position.
Yes, that one was March of 2022.
Correct, so the reappointment would then fill the, the unexpired position.
For one month. Starting today.
For one month.
Yeah.
Good question, Karen. Well, we did have a motion, second, I believe, Carrie had a question, Keith had a question. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Comments to city manager?
Mayor, members of council, I have a few more things than usual tonight, but I'll be brief, and this is really for the public. With the actions of council relating to the school board appointment and the transferring of Mr. Freeman to the Western District, it does then create the vacancy at the at-large position, so any person that might be interested in being considered for the school board, we would ask that you complete a board bank application, if you've not already done so, by the end of next week, to allow council the opportunity, as early as, as next month, to, to make that appointment. An informational note, last week was the conclusion of our fall/winter curb-side leaf collection program for the year. For those that, that might not have given it much thought, we collected almost 15,000 bags of leaves this year, and a lot of those leaves used to be burned in roadside ditches or in backyards, and, and that's not happening anymore, and this is, this is much more convenient for folks, and really appreciate...
The clutter also.
The clutter and the, and the ditches, and so, so just wanted to note, we picked up 14,783 bags of leaves this year. I would also note, if you haven't had a chance to see it, drive by it, that the, that the, I guess you would call it, Public Art, that has traditionally lived in the shipwreck intersection, the shipwreck is back, and courtesy of Public Works and a new paint job, and it looks real nice, and we've got one more enhancement we think we're going to do, but we'll announce that when it comes, but the, the ship is back. I'd like to thank council for your vote of a few minutes ago on all of the appropriation items, but specifically, I want to thank you for the bleachers. Those bleachers out at Messick Point get a tremendous amount of use, and unfortunately, given the age for when we acquired them, which was way before my arrival, and, and what they were made out of and where they were, and the weather and, and the salt air just, just beat them to the point that we determined that they were just unsafe. So we had them removed last week, and, and we're very thankful for their replacement, but even had you not replaced them, they had gotten to the point where it wasn't safe. So I thank Public Works again for, for that, and I thank you for setting the stage for what's next, and we'll get some out of material that should last us a good long time. The last ones, I believe, were donated some time ago. Two other things, I'll, I'll start with the one that's not positive, and then one that is. As, as folks that live in our city know, one, statistically, one of the largest crimes that we have in, in our city is people that go around at night and try to steal things out of unlocked cars. Reminder to folks that to lock your cars at night, there have been very few break-ins to lock cars during my time, but, but unfortunately, not very few, meaning the opposite of that, of unlocked cars, so please take, go the extra step, and also, I guess, as gas prices continue to go up, one of the things that we had this weekend, for the first time in my recollection here, was some folks going around trying to siphon gas out of people's cars, so be, please be mindful of, of your property and do what you can to, to protect yourself, particularly by locking the cars. A lot of cars have the automatic slide-activated gas cap covers, and if your car's locked, they can't get in there to pop that out, so please do help us and help yourself be protected from those types of folks. And lastly, if you happen to be going down with Craig today, notice there was a little bit of construction that began today on the side of the road, adjacent to the sidewalk, roughly in front of Tropical Smoothie. That is the beginning of the next of our little micro parks, and that should be complete in the next couple of weeks, I would imagine, and we're already sort of beginning to think about where we might be able to put the next one, so, but this will make the third, our third one. And that's all I have.
All right, okay. Buddy?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank Ms. Eden Harris and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for their fine work, all the work that they do, especially for the presentation on the gazebo tonight. It looks like a really neat project, look forward to hearing about it in the future. I'd like to welcome Mrs. Lee Etheridge, as Finance Director to the city, glad to see her here, and remind the ci, the citizens of how well of a job that our city manager and his staff are doing. Randy just mentioned, they picked up 14,780 bags of leaves this year, that's among, in addition to all the other road projects and so forth, and you heard him comment on the standard operating procedure for selecting some of the really important committees, such as the school board and planning commission and so forth. We talked about that a lot. Randy put it on paper, that, okay, let's, let's get down, let's do that, and he did an excellent job on that, him and the city staff. So, thank you again, Randy, you and your staff, for your fine work.
Thank you.
And that's my comments for tonight.
Okay, Janet?
Happy to be back after being with my grandkids last month, and I really love going after Bud, because all I have to say is, I agree with everything Bud said.
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilman Southall covered my thoughts very well, so I have no further comment.
Okay, Buddy?
Just like to thank the staff for our last drive-through, thank everybody, permanent people that helped us, to, to man, that all said that y'all worked so hard, and, and they really appreciated what you did. I mean, y'all just set a record for, for volunteering, and it was super. Thank you very much.
Okay, Keith?
Yes, I got three kudos, ones to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, because I miss them, but they got great leadership now, and it is the largest board in the city, so it takes nine people to keep Dave Calas moving forward. And then also, the, the Public Works, besides all the bags they pick up, they just do an endless job of keeping the, the city clean, which is what I really appreciate. And there's, the third one is, there's, there's kind of been a link between the Public Works and the Parks and Rec, and that's a gentleman by the name of Milton Wiggs, who I believe is going to be retiring, maybe today, and I've worked with Milton for the last six, seven years, and guy does an outstanding job, they're going to have, they want another big hole to fill when he goes, so, thank you, Milton, we're out there somewhere. That's it.
Karen?
Over the last three or four days, I've just gotten a bunch of comments about the fact that we got our shipwreck back, that people here to really appreciate that, and the other comment is that that badly misshapen tree that used to sit right there in front of the new drugstore is missing, and those two things have, I've gotten a lot of comment about that, in addition to all the other just regular good stuff, like the leaves and other stuff that, of Parks and Recs and Public Works New Forests, so appreciate all that.
All right, well, you stole my thunder, council.
And Carrie's gonna miss that tree.
That's right. My favorite tree.
Anything else? Okay, we'll take a motion adjourned.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion being second, we adjourn. Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, Kim, we are adjourned.
Excellent job, sir.